Recording in progress.
Session to order. The time is 3:06. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Member Donley. Member Higgins. Member Holloman. Member Jacobs.
Present.
Member Lessons.
Here.
Member Wilson. I do see Member Wilson as present online.
Sorry, I couldn't get my phone off mute. I'm here.
Thank you, President Bellamy. And I, and Member Higgins.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. First on our agenda is board requests for information. Commander, are you able to pull that up for us so we can go through our list? Great, okay. It looks like we have no outstanding requests to prioritize, just the work currently in process. Is there any additional request for information that we need to add at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Member Donley.
Actually, yes. I was, I was just curious. We normally over the, every month, we would get a fund balance for how much our reserves were. But we didn't get that for quite a few months over the summer. And so then that led to when we just got this new information last, you know, weekend regarding excess funds in the account.
Right, I can answer that. So we never do our fund balance, our initial fund balance projection until November because we need two to three full pay periods to make it statistically accurate when we, when we brief it. So our first full pay period is not until September. So we need September, October, November's pay periods to be able to do an eight, nine-month projection. Otherwise, we have no data in which to do a projection. And that's why every year we start doing fund balance projections in December. And then in January, February, March, April, we'll give updates to the fund balance as more information is available. But there's no possible way to do a fund balance projection of any validity without a couple big payroll runs.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Member Donley. And then follow-up, Member Donley?
Oh, just I had, somebody else had one, I just had a quick question. One of the things we're looking at is the savings that might occur from cutting out some parts of the virtual learning we're doing. Could you, I was under the impression that we were making money from the virtual learning and we actually was less expensive in some ways than regular. Was, what, how, how was the savings? Could you further explain how the savings are going to occur then?
But just to interject briefly, Member Donley, this item is on our agenda for tonight. Would this be better addressed during our meeting and not during our RFI process?
That'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you, Member Donley. President Bellamy has joined us, so I'm going to pass the gavel to her. President Bellamy, we're just asking if there's any other RFIs before we jump into our next agenda item.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. So have, have we gone through all of the RFIs? That we have not prioritized? Right, so not seeing any other hands to add any, let's move on to our agenda. Dr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, ASDV Board and community. We'll be providing our last budget work session of 2022. We began this process in July to address a structural deficit of over 60 million and we've made much progress since then. I was pleased that we were able to identify areas of consensus at our special work session. Today, we'll focus on the topic of sixth grade to middle school in particular, as that emerged as an area where board members were interested in additional information before taking action. We hope that today we can address those questions. As a decision to move sixth grade students to middle school will require ample time to plan and execute. I'll hand it off to Jim and our panel.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. If you flip to the next slide, you'll see I did a kind of a replica of the poster board that all the school board members had during the Saturday work session. And just to point out, although when I put these in these spots, it, it may be perceived as the board made decisions. We're all aware that those were not decisions. It was a work session for the board to get their hands wrapped around this. But I just wanted to put it out there as to what we thought there was consensus on. And if you look down in the bottom, I put state bond debt reimbursement under both parking lot and off the table. Because I wasn't sure where that stood in terms of consensus at the end of the Saturday work session. But this is kind of just a primer for Memo 94 that you'll see tonight, where I would suspect certainly on the, the bond debt reimbursement and on the decision to sixth grade, middle school, and on any others that, that you believe we either misunderstood board guidance or, or board direction, or you changed your mind. That Memo 94 was, was designed to be easily amendable. So you can see here that when we added up everything that I believe the board came up with, it's about 40 and a half million dollars. So we're about eight million short. And so as we get into the Memo 94 later, I suspect that the state bond debt reimbursement will be something that gets discussed, or eight million in some other areas. But I, I did want to clarify this particular slide, not that I believe the board made decisions, but this is what we believe the board felt comfortable with at the end of that work session. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see the four RFIs that this brief is kind of designed to, to provide some time to talk about. We'll focus, the bulk of it, on the sixth grade move from elementary to middle school. And Kirsten and Eric and several other staff folks have done a deep dive on just one section. And we picked, we picked the Eagle River area because they're kind of self-contained and did the initial deep dive on impacts to Greening and the elementary schools in the area. So you'll understand the process that the staff goes through. And you'll also see that this is just an initial analysis. And even in the Eagle River area, we have a significant amount of work to do to finalize a plan where we can provide a picture of what the first day of school is going to look like next year. But that was one of the, the big requests at the end of Saturday. Also ASDV 612 discussions about filling low-capacity schools with a lot of pre-K programs. And then at the end of the work session, there, there was a comment about relooking the way we do medical insurance and benefits cost reductions. And those are kind of long-term things because right now we are still kind of focused on the, the near-term objectives. But they're valid discussion points and it, and it is something the administration will move forward with in the next semester and start looking at that. So at this time, I'll hand off to Kirsten.
All right, thank you, Mr. Anderson. For the record, my name's Kirsten Johnson. I'm the Senior Director of Secondary Education. As Jim mentioned, we, we're going to take a deep dive, look into the Eagle River area and, and middle school modeling that includes sixth grade moving up in that area. And, and the area of Eagle River was chosen for good reasons. One, the surrounding middle schools to Greening all already have sixth graders in them. So it's a natural progression for that area of town. And, and we also are concerned about enrollment in our elementary programs in that area as well. So it's a good model for us to look at so that we can see what the process is and then, and how those numbers shake out. So as we move to other areas of town, you understand the process when, when things get a little messier with boundaries and things of that nature. So the purpose of looking at this is to really look at just all the considerations, processes of moving a sixth grade cohort to the middle school that is typically a seventh and eighth grade school. So we used this year's data and some numbers are rounded as we go through, some are not. So there, these are approximate numbers because as we all know, enrollment changes periodically throughout the, the school year. We're going to look at staffing implications. That includes teachers and our support staff, but also federal programming staff. So that we can get a good representation of, of what that actually looks like and not just focused on classroom teachers, but the other support positions that, that students need in their day. We're going to look at budgetary material, training, and other potential changes. One of the big things is logistics and how we get people moved when we make a transition like this. We're going to look at the impacts to neighboring schools as well. And we're going to try to look at the variations to improve consistent enrollment in certain areas and, and we'll talk about those as we go through. And then I, I think what the board, based on your discussion, really wanted to see is implications and changes to staffing as we kind of move. That was a big piece that I heard in discussion is what does this really look like when it happens? When we were in the December 10th work session. So with that, I'm going to, I wanted to start with where our elementary schools are at in terms of our enrollment and our capacity so we can get that baseline. And so I'm going to turn it over to Eric Visti, who can walk us through that, that process.
Good evening, Eric Visti, Senior Director for Elementary Education. So on this slide, you'll see five elementary schools, a little bit of a blend between schools that are currently below their capacity and schools that are at or above their current capacity. The first column really goes into the current enrollment numbers as of, as of now. The fourth column goes into the size of our sixth grade cohort that's currently enrolled in those schools. If you get to the, the final column, the pre-K through five, only capacity be if, if sixth grade continues to move forward into the middle schools, that would leave those schools, three of the schools between 55 and 59% of their enrollment capacity and two of the schools at their enrollment capacity essentially.
You, yes, I mean, can he, you have a question for him now?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I apologize if you've explained this on other town halls. When you include pre-K in a school capacity, could you just clarify for me, maybe one more time? Are we talking about, you know, we're at 100% capacity in a pre-K classroom if we're at 16 students? Or is that capacity based on the classroom could actually fit 30 students in it?
Yeah, to Member Lessons through the President. Good question. So of, of those schools, just to kind of give you a little bit of a landscape, four, three of the schools currently have preschool in them. And that would be Eagle River, Ravenwood, and Ursa Minor all have preschool in them. So the preschool capacity is really measured by about a third of the metric of our overall enrollment compared to a K through five classroom. So even though that enrollment number would show what it was and that percentage of enrollment per student, it comes to about a third of what our general enrollment would be at. So, so while that may be a little bit, lack some clarity, I guess, because you'd actually have a full classroom in point where you'd have a lower number of students in there within the preschool, but you'd actually have a full classroom. Similar to conversations we had when we were at Nodaca and a couple other schools when we were doing our town halls too. So, good question. So, but the three, the three schools that have Title, or not, sorry, Title, Eagle River has a Title I preschool program in it. Ravenwood has a communications and a developmental pre-K program, couple classrooms in there. And then Ursa Minor has a blended program at that school. Ravenwood has the biggest footprint of preschool in Eagle River. Homestead does not, and Elbucul is not. Does that help?
Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah.
Yes, Member Higgins.
Just one bit of clarification. When we look at the capacity, I mean, we're looking at how many kids can fit in a classroom. And so the question is what size of those kids, of, of, of first graders or kindergarten or, or fourth graders? I mean, if we're looking at capacity, if we were at, using Picasodin, which we're updating and we're supporting and saying this is what we should be, what would the capacity be compared to what you're using right now? I don't know what number you consider to be capacity for a first grade class. And that changes the whole picture of what these numbers would be, wouldn't it?
When you look at the way D does utilization and capacity percent, the bulk of the classrooms would probably average out to about 25 as a class size when you look at the square foot. Obviously, when you have life skills classes and things like that, which is really where ours starts varying away from Deed's, where you can only have eight people in a class. That's why our capacities at capital plans, they reflect that class size difference.
So you're anticipating that for your calculation, a kindergarten class has 25 for the purposes of determining full capacity?
No, I, I thought what you asked was what's the number being used for capacity percentages? And it's square foot divided by the number of, of students that you think you can fit in. So for instance, D automatically subtracts a music room, even though a lot of our elementary schools have a music room. They have a music room because there's space in the building. And anytime you have a vacuum in anything in physics, it will be filled. And so you'll find a music room or you'll find a PE room, even though they might be going to the NPR for PE because rooms are available. And that's why when you walk around a building and people say there's no empty classes, it, it might very well be true. It might also very likely be true that people have filled empty classrooms with something that otherwise D wouldn't have counted. And, and music and health and some other stuff are just examples of things. Art, art where in a lot of schools like in, in the valley, where they go around on a classroom into a core classroom, we may very well have an art room just because we have the space.
So I think if I might, Member Higgins, I think he wants to know what is considered an average kindergarten?
Yeah.
First grade, second grade class?
We use PTR, we don't use Picasodin when we do. One, I, I don't even know what the new Picasodin may come out with, but we did not use the class sizes in Picasodin. And neither would D because if D were to use Picasodin class sizes, it would only be relevant to about four or five districts. And all the other really small schools out there where all 15 kids are in one classroom, it, it's not even relevant for a small school. So we don't, we, we tend to follow a more standardized D, square foot divided by the total number of kids.
Well, square foot by number of kids isn't PTR either. So I'm, I'm guessing if we want to go to PTR, and that's what I'm asking, what is the pupil teacher ratio that actually comes out when we talk about a capacity being full? That assumes how many kids are in a classroom because that makes a difference to me. That if we're assuming a, a larger number of kids in a classroom and we're not shooting for that, I don't view that as necessarily under capacity or over, you know, underutilized in regards to the, to the school. And somehow we can fit more kids in a classroom, we know we can do that. But the question is what is the PTR? So everyone varies based upon the size of the school, that the number of kids in a classroom is going to vary based on that? And that's confusing to me.
I think we could probably have a, a whole work session and go through each different type of class and how Capital Plans uses that to figure out the capacity percentage. We didn't prepare that for today's brief, but we certainly could do that in the future. We have about 35 minutes to get through the, this piece today. But I, I think that's worthy of a future work session to go through. How can, how can capacity be, how is it being used? How can it be modified in the future?
I, I do recall a slide from last year, if you could probably pull that up. But I made a note, Member Higgins, to get back. Okay, continue, please.
And so these five elementary schools, we just wanted to give you the current enrollment numbers, the capacity based of our ed specs. And then going back into the sixth grade cohort, as well as what would that leave based off those same measurements for if it was left to fifth grade as our cap in, in the elementary schools at those five schools.
Okay. All right, so just staying on this slide for a minute. One of the things I, I wanted to just make a comment on to the board is that you'll notice that there's a big disparity. Once, once you move sixth graders to middle school in the Greening attendance zone, you'll see a very big difference between our elementary enrollments. So that's what I think, one of the questions was on December 10th, was what does that do to our elementary schools when students move? So it shows you that the capacity variance amongst our elementary schools in the Eagle River area very vastly. And some of our buildings are hovering around that 50 to 60% mark. So that's really, when you take those sixth graders out and it's about 30 to 50 students per school, it really does impact those elementary schools and how many students are attending there. The other thing I, I would just say about elementary enrollment is that we adjust our staffing based on the PTR that the board sets. That is different than what the capacity percentage of the building is. And so that's a really confusing thing, even, even for school administrators when they start out, when they get their, their staffing and have to, to plan. So I think it is worthy of, of kind of discussing at a future board meeting. Moving to the middle school numbers on the next slide, what you'll see is a comparison of Greening Middle School, which is currently a, a seventh, a seventh and eighth grade middle school, and Mear Lake, which is a six through eight middle school. So taking this year's current enrollment, you will see that if we use the current capacity that those buildings have, we can fit more schools in each, or more students in each school pretty readily in that second column. The current capacity for Greening right now is 81% and Mear Lake is 58%. If we move sixth graders to their, their zoned middle school in the Eagle River area to Greening, it would take that percentage capacity for Greening up to 112% or 113, sorry. I don't have, I forgot to put my glasses on. And then Mear Lake would maintain itself at 58% because they already have their sixth graders there. So it gives you a, a picture of what those two middle schools in the Eagle River Chugiac area would look like if sixth graders moved up to their currently zoned middle school. That doesn't mean in the future there can't be further conversations about how you balance that attendance out between the two schools. And that may be a conversation that we want to explore as a district. But if we left everyone with their currently zoned middle school, this is what moving sixth grade in the Eagle River Chugiac would look like in the middle school numbers and capacity. So some things to think about when it comes to Greening. We're adding about 231 sixth graders to Greening. That's how many sixth graders would be zoned to go to Greening in the following year. So that would equate to about a 7.6 FTE increase at the middle school. But keep in mind that much of that FTE would follow the students. So it would come from the elementary school and move to the middle school to accommodate their new home at Greening. So that would include support staff like special education, English language learner, teachers, some of our Title VI services, all of those support services that students currently receive in their sixth grade elementary classroom would then move to Greening with them in the next school year. When we look at our metrics, when we figure out our PTR around counselors and clerical staff and security, the metric for Greening would increase, right? So we would see an additional counselor, an additional administrative assistant or clerical person, and an additional security that is needed at Greening as well with those 231 students moving over. So we wanted to get just eyes on the school itself. And, and so Shannon Bingham was able to do a walkthrough this morning. And he could give you a rundown of just more of the details when, from his vantage point, when he went into Greening and, and what he could see there for sixth graders moving up.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. So I did do a, a one and a half hour walkthrough of Greening this morning with George Fekalas and with Bobby Jeffs, the principal there. And our question was, could we accommodate those 231 sixth graders in this building and have it be an effective functioning facility? And in a nutshell, the answer to that question was yes. We looked at the D capacity, which is based on all of our analysis, is roughly about a 25 to one class ratio. And we know that that building will probably run at a higher rate. But we went through the building and the master schedule and determined that even if we were to use the D capacity, we would be looking for eight classrooms. So we identified five classrooms that were currently not in active use and two classrooms that could be available via, via what we call compression. Meaning if you have a 300 square foot space that has, is being used for office and a 500 square foot space that has six or eight, or, or five or six students, can you put those students in the smaller space? Then you have another classroom that's bigger that only has 12 students in it, can you put those in the slightly smaller space? So we went around using kind of an efficiency approach to see what would be the right-sized classrooms for some of these small groups of predominantly special education children who are in a smaller class size. And we were able to say, yes, with still having very appropriately sized spaces, we could come up with another two classrooms. And then we looked at the health classroom, which was only in use for two of five periods. And we ascertained that that room could be come a, a fully available classroom if we were to deliver health on a mobile basis. Meaning essentially the health teacher would go from location to location, delivering that instruction. So we were able to obtain five classrooms. And we did a variety of kind of sniff testing of looking at that building. I've walked through probably 5,500 school buildings in the last 40 years. And a lot of the middle schools that I have seen delivered to about 850 students are the size of Greening. A lot of the spaces are extremely generously sized. It has had a $30 million plus repair and renovation that added space to the building. We do not know what the post-earthquake capacity of Greening is at this time. So I did a quick calculation based on 30 to one in 35 classrooms and eight to one for four small group instructional special education classrooms. And came up with a number very close to the target number of children we would have in Greening if we moved the sixth grade in, at a 75% efficiency ratio. Meaning just running it as five of seven, five periods in use out of seven possible. So again, we stepped back and we scratched our heads and looked at it. And then we walked the building and we looked at these various places where we could become more efficient. We photographed those places. We came back, we reconsidered one more time. And the answer to our question was again, yes, we could accommodate those students, even though the D capacity does not agree with the total enrollment. Just basically looking at it from a practical standpoint, we believe that we could accommodate that enrollment. It would require three lunch periods, very similar to what we do in other middle schools. It would require the additional staff people that were mentioned in order to accommodate the scale of the additional children in the building. And we believe it would work in that configuration. The boundary has already been optimized. So the Mear Lake boundary comes within probably three quarters of a mile of Greening already. So there aren't a whole lot of opportunities there to adjust the boundary, but we could do some minor changes to try to mitigate the enrollment a little bit. But for the most part, we believe that the sixth grade would work at Greening.
Okay, question? Yes, Member Higgins?
Thank you. I think, you know, we're addressing an issue different than what I thought we were going to address. First of all, we talked about it saving $3.1 million in Memo 4 and that, that included elimination of the middle school model where you have the extra class. And so it really didn't say what we were saving by moving sixth grade into the middle school, separating those two out. But the question is to me, not the efficiency issue of what we can accomplish. I'm sure we can squeeze even more kids in. The question is educational outcomes to me. Moving sixth graders into a junior high model, which is not a middle school when you don't have the extra hour there, you don't have the extra time, the grouping, the way you're doing it. And then looking at the educational outcome for the kids, what are we gaining? Are the kids going to be better off educationally to do it or not? And that's separate from, I know you can physically fit more kids in the classroom. You can physically fit more kids in the school beyond 100% capacity. I appreciate that. And if we get cut enough, we're probably going to test that model for all the schools, the way things are going. But I just don't understand right now, from an educational outcome, why this is a good decision for the sixth graders when they move at their age into a model where they don't have that smaller group type of approach and support, which worked and doing it. which worked and doing it this way, I don't, I haven't heard that addressed, and that's my issue.
And I think that's part of the discussion, though, but we haven't gotten to it yet. Like, what does the middle look like? What are the components of the middle school when we move students there?
Correct. And if I could just add, Madam President, we completely agree, Member Higgins, that this needs to be both something looked at through the fiscal lens, but also the academic lens. So actually, in this next slide, we'll go over those academic benefits for the board to consider as they make the decision.
You just hadn't gotten there yet. Go on, sir.
Yeah, all all great questions and concerns. Just to wrap up this last, this slide, if we could go back one one slide in the slide deck. The the other things that we still need to do further analysis on from a fiscal standpoint are addenda for sports and activities. If you move sixth graders to middle school, you are going to have that many more kids participating in sports and activities after school. We will need to look at busing and transportation. There will be some teacher training because it's a very different model, teaching elementary school versus middle school. Good teachers are good teachers, though, and we can get them ready. And we'll need to look at just a variety of other things like elective choices and equipment and our special education resources. So those are all things that would require further analysis from us, but they're all doable things. And so moving to the to Member Higgins' points of what are the benefits? When we were guided. Sorry, my mic just quit on me. So when we were moving through this, the the schedule pieces, the five of seven versus a different scheduling model are all things that we've talked about. Just to summarize some of the benefits of sixth grade and middle school, so we can think about academic benefits for kids. And we've talked about some of these before. But there's a huge increase in opportunities for kids to explore either CTE courses, whether they want to dive into band orchestra and choir and have that instruction daily in music, which is is not something that they get at the elementary level. And then it being introduced to world languages at an earlier age if they're not involved in an immersion program. And and when you think about the board goal of college career life ready, there are a lot of things that I think that we can do with sixth grade moving to middle school to provide opportunities in that realm for them. So the other thing that is an instructional benefit for kids is daily instruction in social studies and science because it's a scheduled course for them within their day. It doesn't mean that we don't teach those subjects at elementary school because our elementary school teachers do a good job of that. But often it is secondary to math and reading. And so getting that daily instruction at sixth grade when, you know, those concepts and ideas are more complex is a benefit. One of the things that is a struggle with sixth grade being at two different levels between elementary and and middle is often students who need a higher level of math. While they can be accommodated at the elementary level so that they get services in a higher level of math, such as algebra or geometry, we even have some elementary students in sixth grade who are as high as precalculus, who are who are trying to accommodate so that they get what they need. In in a middle school, it's much easier to schedule them during that that time. And all of our middle schools have upper level math courses available, especially at the algebra one level, for sure. And most of our schools also have geometry scheduled within their day. So if a sixth grader is ready for those levels of math, they get a daily instruction period for math. The other thing about sixth grade moving to middle school is we have a standardized instruction mode for all subjects across the board. So then when we're looking at data, like sixth grade math data, we're comparing apples to apples. We're not comparing sixth grade at elementary with maybe some different instruction methods, maybe some different instructional time versus a middle school that looks very different. And so then we have a really good picture of what our sixth graders are capable of, and we're comparing apples to apples. So I think that is a huge benefit. It also is a logistical benefit from the instruction side behind the scenes. We can focus teacher training. We can be more intentional about what we're doing. The other thing that comes with middle school is a required PE hour. So the one of their class periods every day is a PE course. And they do not get daily PE at at the the elementary level in sixth grade. And they also have the opportunity in middle school to participate in sports and activities. And all of the research points that the more involved the kid is in in those types of activities outside of of their regular school day, the more engaged they are in school. And we're seeing sixth graders across the board just really ready for that opportunity. So we can provide that to all of our kids, not just for a certain subset of kids that are already in sixth grade in our three middle schools that have sixth grade. The other thing that's that's easier at the middle school level is just the level of service we can provide to students who need specialized services. We have a little bit more space. We can adjust staffing a little bit better. We spend less time on travel for teachers going from school to school to school to provide those services. So if you're thinking of something like speech and language, like that teacher isn't traveling between multiple schools to provide the service. They could be right at the one middle school and serve more students. So the last thing that's actually not a bullet on your benefit sheet that isn't necessarily directly tied to instruction, but I think speaks pretty a lot of volume into support for this decision is both Eric and I have had multiple meetings with principals around this topic. And when you talk to both elementary principals and middle school principals, there's pretty much unanimous support for sixth graders moving to middle school. So if you think of that body of knowledge that our ASD principals have and their experience in the educational field, and you can get them all to pretty much across the board agree on a concept, that's a rare thing in education. And I think that's it's of note for the board that that's kind of where we are as a district, is our leaders are really telling us that this is the right move for our kids. I'm not going to deny there's challenges with moving sixth grade to middle school. Many of them are adaptive challenges. There's definitely going to be criticism for that move for folks who see success in the sixth grade elementary model. That's something that we would have to weather if that decision moves forward. We will continue to have lower enrollment at elementary, and and that forces some other decisions at the board level around elementary schools who have low enrollment. And so and and that may indirectly cause some boundary shifts that we may need to consider as well to accommodate. So there are classroom and instructional area needs that exist at some schools. And we, so we may run into places where we need a relo or two at a middle school to make everything flow nicely. So that's that's an ancillary issue that we would have to to address. And then middle school with with moving our sixth graders to middle school, we would look at increasing clerical security and counselors. That's where that is a cost at the middle school level. But I think there are ways to mitigate that as well. It's a challenge to think about. So I know this probably didn't answer all of your questions. It may have triggered some, but we wanted to provide a case study of of what a community would face when when you did move that sixth grade to middle school in terms of the numbers and the financial impact.
Okay, we have a question from Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Maybe a question for Mr. Bingham based on who handled proportions of the presentation. But what would the academic benefits be for students to having two eighty to eighty-five percent capacity middle schools instead of an a hundred and thirteen percent, a fifty-eight percent?
I may not be qualified to answer that question, but as far as there being two evenly utilized schools, I I think there's a certain amount of elbow room advantage that comes from it that that are atmospheric issues. But again, I think once children are in a classroom, they're in the classroom. And ninety percent of their academic day is in the classroom. So I think that's that's always been the observation I've made of that. You know, obviously, between these two middle schools, there is a difference in utilization. There's five elementaries that are proposed to feed to Greening and three that would feed to Mirror Lake. But given where the buildings are, where the children live, and the way that community is structured with with major highway going through it north to south, there's just not another way to structure the way the children feed to the building. The Mirror Lake boundary actually includes the north edge of Eagle River. So there's just, there's just not a great way to restructure that community. So we're kind of stuck with what we've got. But from an education standpoint, I would, I would think that either of the the executive directors would have a better perspective on educational impacts. But but again, my perspective is always, once children are in the classroom, they're in the classroom. And if you have an overutilized, you know, a school that is intensively utilized, some of those impacts can have an atmospheric crowding feel, but at the same time, richness comes along with that. So what we were talking about at Greening today was a lot of the partial FTE that that building has would become full-time people or close to full-time people if they had the sixth grade students in the building. And so there were some advantages, clear advantages to that, that would have some educational outcomes. And some of the other course offerings, the idea of having a very rich fine arts program at Greening that sixth grade children could take advantage of was another thing that we talked about. So with scale comes, there are pros and cons. The atmospherics of a little bit of management issues associated with juggling a lot of kids in an intense space. But at the same time, you have so much richness from a faculty standpoint, from a course offering standpoint, some of the opportunities that children can take advantage of. So it's kind of a dual edged sword when you think about that. I don't really think there is a research based difference between pros and cons educationally of a of a lower versus a higher utilization school, just depending upon what children are experiencing in that building.
Did you have a follow up?
Yes.
I'd like to, just for the record, make sure that Member Holloman has joined us and Member Wilson is online.
Thank you. As I know, we haven't seen your report. It is just kind of a final product. I understand that part of that was guidance from, waiting guidance from the board. So I think some of that is is to be expected. As part of the final report that you provide, the district and the school board, will you be mapping out what a potential round two or round three of closures look like to include at least the pool of potential candidates? I think, I guess where I'm going with it, I'm tying it back to something we heard on the tenth, which is that by moving sixth to middle, we'll be creating, the new figure will be nineteen schools of sixty-five percent or less. And I think what you've educated us on thus far is capacity isn't the only indicator that you look to when identifying candidates, but it is a factor.
I'll defer to Mr. Anderson to to answer that. I may offer some follow on if it's appropriate.
Right, so we're we're finalizing the report now and working with Shannon and cleaning it up. As you can imagine, it's very difficult to specifically name schools by individual name on round two and round three when when we're not positive what round one is going to look like. And before we get to a point where we put schools on round two, we need to ask the board, so if it makes it through the first time, does that mean forever and ever it is never to be brought up again and those are now off the table permanently? And that we must look at other schools because that impacts what would be round two or round three if it is a a permanent grandfathered safety. We have a lot of questions to discuss with the board. So what you will see is a list of a dozen schools. It'll include the schools that you have that were brought before you this year, and it will bring six more. It does not include those elementary schools that that might have been included if sixth grade to middle school had already been approved. As you can imagine, this is a multi-year strategy and approach to getting more efficient school district. So it's not meant to be, this is the one report that'll last the district for a decade. It is, this is the report based off the information we had all fall. And it will include the six schools that were originally listed from October on. But we have more, we we have more discussions with the board before we can determine what would be round two. And specifically, that will not be in the report because I'm I'm just not sure where the board's headed.
Member Holloman?
I know sometime way back when we needed to load balance in northern part of the district, students had the option of going to middle school or staying in elementary for sixth grade. And I'm guessing, I I thought at the time that was pretty cool because there are seventh graders that show up that you look at and you go, wow, they need to be back in elementary school. And the other way around as well. But I'm guessing that that does not get us what we need in terms of savings or efficiency or anything to offer that as an option.
I'll let Eric follow up, but we did discuss that a little bit. And in general, if you're already barely a one section school, it's very difficult to now split that one section up and provide a teacher for each of the nine kids that might be there if they were to split out.
And if you go back to, I think it's slide six with elementary school enrollment capacity, you'll see the sixth grade cohort. So if you start bringing those down and looking at PTR ratios to Mr. Higgins' earlier question about round twenty-seven, you'd see how that number would would dwindle down and you become much less efficient to do something like that.
So we have about less than ten minutes left. The piece that if, and I don't know who will, who can, who will want to speak to it. What I didn't hear about in the benefits column is the teacher collaboration, teaming of pods. What's currently happening? We we are already doing this, right? We're doing it with Mirror Lake, we're doing it with Clark. This is not new. It's it's new in that it's attached to the budget this way, but it's not new. So how do we achieve those benefits for kids in the middle school model that includes sixth grade?
Sure, so you're referencing the five of seven schedule and middle school model? I just wanted to make sure I was answering the right question. So, great question. So when we are looking to transition sixth grade to middle school, there was a lot of discussion on the tenth around whether it should be a five of seven schedule and include that middle school model or collaboration time is what our teachers know it as. We we would continue to plan that direction until we hear differently from the board. Or if the board has a statement that says this is the way we want it, we would plan it that way as well. When we were talking earlier in in the school year around the transition, it was the administration's presentation that we would eliminate that model. But I think the board is starting to give us some different direction around that. So there are clear benefits to that time in terms of student support and a safety net for kids because often there are transition issues when students move to middle school because they're managing a whole new environment and a whole new set of of issues just being a preteen or or newly mentored teenager. That collaboration time addresses those and and provides intervention for kids in that transition. It's also a time for our teachers to collaborate specifically around around our students and to provide some team teaching opportunities as well. So so essentially, I'm I'm not answering the question well. We're looking a little bit more for the board direction on that because there's been a variety of of conversations going on.
Okay, so let's, is there another question? It looks like we're we're only going to get to this this topic today because we shortened our time today to an hour. Member Les.
Thank you. Maybe this is a question for Mr. Bingham based on your expertise in building utilization. But is there an ideal range that we should have in mind for when buildings operate efficiently, both for elementary and for secondary? Like, are there parameters that you've found are especially helpful?
I like to be in the mid to the upper eighties most of the time. As far as running at a hundred percent, it depends upon the building. I've made it clear to the administration that I have some real conflict with the deed capacity rubric. I think that it I I think that a lot of these buildings, given where we're staffing now, where budgets are headed for a lot of western districts with higher class sizes, that the capacities of these buildings are probably higher than what the deed numbers are showing. Now, again, other parts of the building can break. Lunchrooms break, parking lots break, core areas break. But as we look But, um, as we look at these buildings, I think that at a certain size parameter, what the children get in the building is richer with more children and more adults in the building. And I think that when you try to run at eighty-five percent, you have more adults and more children in the building. And both at elementary and secondary, they get more. At elementary, they get, uh, non-gen ed support by specialized educators. And usually that's thirty-five to thirty-eight percent of every faculty or people with a specialized service that they provide. At the secondary level, you're getting class offerings, extracurriculars, all sorts of richness there as a secondary student that you lose when schools get really small. And I see the master schedule diminish as a school gets smaller relative to, to certain general size parameters. So right now I'm working with another district that has two middle schools that are three hundred and fifty and we have a huge elective problem with those two middle schools because they're not big enough to have non-core faculty in the building. So I, I, I think that mid-eighties would be what I would say. And then I think in the case of Greenwich, we're looking at a building that is, um, has had quite a bit added to it post-earthquake. It's had, um, a significant amount of money spent on it. It's functional and it's big.
Did you have one, uh, add something?
Uh, I just wanted to add a footnote to what Shannon just said. Um, when he's talking about elective choices and challenging schedules, Mirror Lake is one of those smaller schools that does have that challenge with electives, um, at a fifty-eight percent capacity, just as a, a real life example.
All righty, um, just in, I don't think we'll start a new topic with, in the interest of time. Uh, but could you go back to that, um? Uh, no. The list of topics. So, um, the, the, moving the sixth grade to the middle, that's part of a kind of a double equation. Because if we move sixth grade to the middle, then we don't have to worry about band and orchestra, correct? All right. Um, so, uh, I guess I, I guess what's, what might help the board is just talking to having, understanding what is currently happening in those schools that have sixth grade. I mean, I know what's happening at Clark. I know what's happening at Begit. Uh, I'm not sure what's happening at Mirror Lake. And what, is there another one?
No.
It's L Street.
That's it. Okay. Yep.
All right.
Yeah, Madam President, um, so to answer your question directly, all of our middle schools, whether they're six through eight or seven, eight, are all offering, um, a middle school model or collaboration time as, as we call it in, in the teaching world. So all of those supports across the district are happening. Um, for those that were sitting on the board, um, a few years ago, um, when, when the AEA committee combined with myself and others from the district agreed upon a schedule, we recommended that we move forward with that with the increase in PTR at that time, which is why middle school and high school PTR are the same to create a cost differential so we could have that five of seven schedule. That was the agreement at the time. Um, it's been maintained for the last four years. Um, when we were looking at a budgetary item this year, um, we recommended moving sixth grade to middle school without that piece as a cost savings. But I think there's interest at the board in maintaining that collaboration time by some members. And, um, and so therefore, um, that's kind of where we're at, at this point. But to answer your question again, what's happening now is that that collaboration time is happening across the board in our middle schools.
Okay. And just, if I may just put a pin on what Dr. Johnson said, the administration would be supportive of a movement from sixth grade to middle school and maintaining the middle school model because of the numerous academic benefits that we outlined. So this is really transcended beyond a financial conversation and more about how do we expand offerings to students? So that is a very compelling thing for the board to consider.
Absolutely. Thank you. That was a missing piece for me. Yes, Member Donley?
Thank you. So I support moving and doing away with the middle school model. Um, what's the difference in, we were told there'd actually be an increase of expense. Uh, our budget would be greater if we moved and kept the middle school model. Um, so if we do that, how much more is that going to cost us? And what would be the, the delta there between doing away with the middle school model?
So I, I think we have found a way where we can do it if we maintain a thirty point two-five or a thirty-one point two-five, because it appears the board is headed that direction, that we can make this shift, um, without costing much more at all. Um, where, where it would become complicated is if we were to do away with, um, the extra planning time and then that would change the PTR and lower it, um, for, for whatever reason, then, then you would start seeing some pretty large cost increases. But, uh, we believe the board is supportive or is moving in the direction of a plus one PTR. It appeared that way. Um, and, and we think we can, we can keep this to where it, it may not be cost neutral, but that it won't cost more or, or very little. Um, so that's what we're working on him. You know, when we do an estimate in September and three months later, after now spending five hundred more hours on something, you, you find more efficient ways to, to do it. So if we can keep a thirty point two-five or higher PTR, we can make this happen.
So that brings, thank you. Thank you, uh, the whole panel. Thank you, guys. Um, we are at the end of our first, of our hour together. Uh, can we move into executive session? Need a motion to move? And we will pick up our other topics.
Madam President, move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiable contracts.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion to move into executive session for legal, uh, and contracts. Seeing no opposition? Let's move.